Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. I'm a couple minutes behind schedule, sorry about that. I do appreciate everybody coming out this evening on such a crummy day outside. Hopefully it's kinda cleared up a little bit. You didn't get soap coming in. First thing I'm going to do is I'm gonna call up Andrea Lopez, who is our senior representative from the Don Tyson School of Innovation. Come on up here, she's gonna lead her pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well Andrea, I have a nice bio of a lot of your accomplishments here, but I don't like reading that stuff, so I'm going to let you tell us about yourself and what you've done while you've been a part of our district and what your plans are.
Yeah, so my name is Andrea and I've been going to Don Tyson School of Innovation for around three years. I moved from Chicago and currently right now I'm pursuing my passions in the medical industry. So, I've been doing a lot of clubs, so I'm president of my HOSA chapter at my school. And I've also worked at a hospital during the summer. And I've done research and I've done many things to pursue these passions, but I've also been a part of many other things that I like to pursue, such as baking, I like to crochet, and I like to do a bunch of other stuff that's not school-related. And yeah, so after high school I plan to go to the University of Arkansas to study biomedical engineering. And after that I hope to pursue grad school as well. And I don't know my plans after that, but that's what I have so far.
Good start. Good start. Board, does anybody have any questions for Andrea?
What has been one of your favorite classes at Don Tyson?
One of my favorite classes has been a program that they've been offering at our school. They just offered it this year, it's called EMT. And it's only a semester-long class. And I really like it because I was able to go to hospitals and actually use the skills that we had in the classroom and that we were learning about. And I was able to apply them in the hospital setting. And we were not only in the hospital, but we were also on the ambulances and we were at the fire station. So I really liked that class because it was very...
Hands-on?
Yes, it was hands-on. But it also pushed me to be able to know that I wanna pursue the medical field. So, I did wanna pursue business at first, but by taking these classes that my school offers, I've been able to confirm that I do wanna go into the medical industry.
So tell me a little bit, because I don't know anything at all about biomedical engineering.
Yes.
Like, what kind of career? Like, what do you do with that?
So with biomedical engineering, I won't be in a hospital setting, but I'll still be in the medical field. So I'll be able to help create devices like prosthetics and devices that help the community, like medical devices, like oxygen machines and stuff. So I'll be able to work on any devices that could go into hospitals, but also devices that people take home if they're supposed to be like in a hospital care setting, but they have their equipment at home. So I'll be able to work on that. And I wanted to pursue that because my grandma was using these medical devices and I wanted to be able to make them more reliable so that people in the future don't have to worry about any complications. So that's one of the reasons why I wanted to do biomedical engineering. But that's the overall idea of biomedical engineering.
That's awesome. And you made a five on your Spanish AP?
Oh, yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So, like, do you have a bunch of hours, college hours already?
Um, yes, I do. I have college credits, I think. I have around enough for two associate's degrees.
Oh wow. So you're not gonna have to go to college for four years like most people do?
No, but I hope to pursue a minor in psychology as well. And I'm figuring out right now what else I wanna pursue. But I really like that I was able to get these college credits because I get to do more stuff in college, but maybe still take up the four years.
Yeah, like you'll be able to start with the classes that pertain directly to your major.
Yes.
That's awesome.
Board, anybody else? If not, your mom's here with you?
Yes, my mom's in the third row over here.
Thanks for coming tonight. And we appreciate you being here. We look forward to watching you progress through your last little bit of high school and into college. And maybe you'll come back and say hi to us sometime.
I will, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we need to make any changes to the agenda? Everything good?
The only thing is, the Central boys basketball team, Coach Fippe is gonna talk about it, but they're probably gonna come back at the next board meeting. They're a little bit afraid of the weather this day.
Okay.
So I don't want it.
Alright. Other than that, everything stands as is?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second?
Alright, we have a motion by Mr. Emerson, a second by Mrs. Creek to approve the agenda for tonight's meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. That brings us to the consent agenda. And it looks like really the only thing we have on the consent agenda tonight is our meeting minutes from last month's meeting. Do we need to make any changes or additions, subtractions, anything? If not, if it's gonna stand, I could use a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Alright, we have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mr. Bell to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, that brings us to a bunch of celebrations that I'm gonna pass off to Dr. Cleveland to introduce you. Go ahead.
Yeah. Awesome opportunity tonight to introduce you to Mr. Jeremy Butler. Mr. Butler, would you come forward? Who else is coming forward, Mr. Butler?
He's solo.
Yeah, he's solo. I think, I don't know where to turn. Mr. Butler was awarded the True Grit Award. I believe you see, he got to go in front of the Capitol. So we wanted to invite Mr. Butler here. And of course his family's here too. And don't forget to introduce them, because that's really why you're here, right? Because they're with you. But we're so proud of Mr. Butler. I'd like for him, if he doesn't mind, to share his story a little bit and how he was led to the True Grit Award and how he was named Jeremy Butler.
Absolutely, thank you, Dr. Cleveland. So, that's my family back there. My wife Erin, she's a teacher at Shaw. That's her father, Tom Malaklin. And then my son Wyatt. And then Abigail Butler. So, my story starts with trauma, really. I grew up in a house with just a lot of abuse. So, I took it out at school. I took it out on my teachers. I took it out just on anybody. And so I didn't do so well in school, needless to say. So, I ended up going to ALE, where I had some great mentors. Tim Wies, TJ Wies, the name too, who really took me under their wings. Really modeled what it was to be a man. Because back then I thought that the measure of a man was by how much destruction he could cause by his fists. But they really showed me that, hey, it's really by how much you can build a community. So, huge thanks to them. So, I was able to do well enough in school to make decent grades, to barely get by, to get my GED, and to join the military. That was really my only option. I joined the military really to, just to get away from all the influences here at the time. And so when I joined the military, I went into the infantry, because why not? And eventually I did wanna go back to college. I did really wanna try in school. Because I believe whenever I graduated, my GPA was like a 1.2 here. It was not great. So I joined the military, did quite well. I achieved the rank of Staff Sergeant E6 within eight years. Went to sniper school, did three tours, two tours in Iraq, then a tour to Afghanistan. And then, actually on my first tour I did experience a traumatic brain injury from an IED roadside bomb. And I struggled with that throughout my years in my military. And I really thought I was gonna be a lifer, but I did have some complications. So I ended up, you know, exiting the military. And, you know, the both Wieses were like, hey, go to college, man, become a teacher. So, that's what happened. I, you know, went to a college in Washington, did well, met my wife. We decided to come back here in Northwest Arkansas and went to the University of Arkansas, graduated with a GPA of 3.88. So it's a big difference when you try. So, and that's really it. Got a job at Central Junior High, then ended up at Hellstern, that's where I'm at now. And life couldn't be better. Making great choices, obviously. And, yeah, it's a true honor to have this award named after me. I couldn't believe it. I think there's honestly more people deserving, but it's an honor. It really is. And every day I think I can relate to students and, you know, their hardships, what they're going through. And sometimes I tell them what I went through. I think sometimes it's really good to be transparent. And, yeah, I really think that it helps. Helps me as a teacher, for sure. So.
That's an amazing story. So, I'm curious though, like how, not that I think it's very deserving that it's named after you, but how did they find you? Like...
Good question. I guess I left a part out. Well, it's just, I'm just trying to keep it short for everyone's sake. But, so while I was in the military, I kept in contact with Tim and TJ Wies. They asked me to come speak to their students a couple of times. And so I was like, yeah, absolutely. So whenever I was on leave, I would come back and talk to students. And so eventually Lori Lamb, she was the ALE director for the state. She was a director. She was like, hey, can I borrow you a couple times? And so I kinda went throughout the state. I went to, gosh, over twenty schools, I wanna say. I think there was more. Talking to schools, ALE schools all over Arkansas. And so I've always kept in contact with her. And so she's on the board of, it's Alternative Ed, the director of Al-, it's an alternative ed organization. And so they were, you know, making this award. And they called me and asked me if it was okay. And so I was like, absolutely, yeah. So that's how it all happened.
That's amazing.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
You know, to break that cycle with your own children is incredible.
I, yes, yes.
We appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedule to come be a part of the meeting and to share your story. It really is amazing. And the fact that you share it with your kids freely, that says a lot. So, we appreciate you doing that. We appreciate you being a part of the district.
Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
You can't leave, you have to stay.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your service.
It's all thanks to your serving.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think you really needed standing ovation, and so did our student. We just have such great people in Springdale. We're all very blessed to be part of it. Speaking of great people, well, no, wait. It's Coach Fippe. Coach Fippe.
The gosh, it has been thrown.
Coach is wonderful, but he's here to talk a little bit about Central and then talk about maybe next...
Yeah, we had some complications today with people being checked out. So we just decided to let the team come to the next school board meeting. And I'll go ahead and read what we had planned for tonight. It was an exciting year with this team here. We're thrilled to announce the achievements of our Central Junior High men's basketball team for the season. Their dedication, teamwork, and perseverance have not only made us proud, but have also exemplified the spirit of excellence that we strive to cultivate within our community. The ninth grade Central Warriors have an overall record of 21-1. We can get into the 1 later on, how that happened. We've got several issues that we need to take up with that one referee-wise. 10-0 in the conference. Season highlights that they had this year. They won the Northwest Arkansas Classic Tournament. Champions in that. Little Rock freshman Showcase Champions in that. That's the first time in Northwest Arkansas in a long time that anybody has won that tournament. They were conference champions. They were the Final Four Tournament and the host at Central Junior High. Coach Sutherland and his staff and program have done a superior job on this season. To end this, because I'd usually have them standing up and all that during this time. I'd also like to thank Dr. Lofton at Central Junior High, his administration team, the coaches, teachers, and volunteers on hosting the Final Four Tournament. They put on a first-class event, feeding people, hospitality rooms. Did a really good job having it address, even after the game with the celebrations. Again, presenting to the board, congratulations to the Central Junior High men's basketball team.
Awesome. Any questions?
As always, great job, Coach Fippe. Now I'd like to invite Mr. Donell and Cody. We've got some really awesome celebrations about some really fantastic employees.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, board members, and thank you, Dr. Cleveland. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Ms. Janelle Harp, if you wanna come on up here. Ms. Harp has been, she's the counselor at Sonora Elementary. She's been in education for thirty years.
This is in mail.
Thirty years, thirty years, that's a long time. Ms. Harp is a certified trauma-informed counselor, an outstanding counselor leader in our counselor meetings. And this year's ARISA Health Mental Health Champion. And we have the award here to show everyone. It is an absolutely gorgeous award. And I have to tell you, I was there when they, I was telling her I was gonna tell you all this. I was there when they gave her this award at Sonora Elementary. And her dog, Tripp, ran all, as soon as they said, Ms. Harp, I mean, her dog, she has her service dog at Sonora. And he ran, did he not, ran all over that room. It was like he knew that she had just won an award.
Yes, he did. Oh, that boy. So, do you have questions for me? Is that... Hi, sorry. So this is, I mean, it's, to me, knowing the people that I work with, the counselors that I share this job with, it's amazing. It's really a big honor because I know how many mental health champions we have in this district. And so to be selected, let alone just, I mean, for the state, let alone just being selected over some of the ones that I work with, is really, truly an honor to have that. So, very thankful for that.
Well, we appreciate you doing what you do. And we hope that you continue doing what you do for many more years.
Yes, that's a plan.
Congratulations on the award. Is there like another level? Or is this, is there like a national level, or is this it?
I don't think, because it's from ARISA Health. I don't think they're, I think they're only in Arkansas.
Just local, okay. Alright.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Next, I'd like to introduce Ms. Jean Little, if you could come up here, please. Ms. Jean Little is the counselor at Pre-K. This is Ms. Little's twentieth year in mental health and tenth year, tenth year, correct, at Pre-K. Ms. Little is also a certified trauma-informed counselor, nationally board certified, and is an exemplary counselor leader for us in Springdale. And this year's Arc City, ArcSA Northwest Region Elementary School Counselor of the Year. So would you like to make some comments?
I'm just, I'm really honored, kinda like Janelle said. It's an honor to be recognized. And sometimes I think Pre-K gets left out of a lot of the stuff. So just to be a Pre-K counselor and be recognized is really, really cool.
So, you've been with the district for twenty years?
So I've been with the district for fifteen years. And then mental health, I worked at Piney Ridge, ARISA Health, all of those places before coming to Springdale. So, yeah.
Have you been at any other schools besides...
I was five years at George Elementary. I taught first grade there, yep. And then moved into the Pre-K role, thanks to Dr. Cleveland. Yes, that was, yeah, that was a big deal. I was ready and it's just, I love Pre-K. Pre-K is not for everybody, so it's a different world. But, yeah, I love it.
Well, we appreciate everything that you've done for us. I thought that you started out at George.
I did, yeah.
I remembered you being there a few years ago.
And I still go there, because I travel all across the district. So I go to every elementary school every month and do lessons and plus the main early childhood center. So, yeah.
Awesome. Well, congratulations on the honor. Does yours have another level, or is this...
It does. So it's, this is just for the Northwest region. And then I have to do an application for the state level. So, we'll see.
Well, good luck with that.
Yes, my mom is with me back there. My husband is home with, one girl had braces today and the other is on a bus back from East Con. So, my mom is here.
Well, Mom, thanks for being here. Alright. Thank you.
Thank you.
Finally, I'd like for band and choir directors to come up here. I'm gonna introduce everybody as they come up. Just the part I get nervous. Yeah, exactly. So we have Casey Jones, he's choir director at George Junior High. We have Mr. Clint King-Ansel. He's choir director at Harper High School. We have Ms. Rachel Cornet, she's choir director at Lakeside Junior High. We have Mr. Alan Showalter, he's choir director at Southwest Junior High. Mr. Ed Gay, choir director at Southwest Junior High. Mr. Alonso, he is the band director at, Omar Alonso, he's the band director at Southwest. Mr. Darren Ford, band director at Harper. And CJ Morris, band director at Harper. And Mr. Julie Stevens, band director at SHS. I wanna say something about this, is that, you know, I get to come to work every day and work with these folks. And counselors and social workers, I mean, like, it's a dream job. Sometimes I have to pinch myself and even question, do I really get to do this every day? I mean, this is a really great dream job. I'll say, on this next slide here, it is 700 all-region qualifiers. I'm gonna say that again, 700. That just, that number went up today. 700 all-region qualifiers, 95 all-state qualifiers, 19... I always say this wrong, SWATCA, okay? Qualifiers. And I wanted to say, the future for band and choir in Springdale is bright. Okay, it is super bright. And these folks right here make it super bright. They are master motivators, they are master disciplinarians, they are master getter-dunners. Like I call people, you know, get it done. Like, get it done. Whatever you gotta do, get it done. Forty-nine hundred kids participate in the Springdale Band and Choir programs. It's pretty equal. It's about 2,400 and 2,300, something like that. So I mean, it's pretty equal on the numbers. If you'll go to that next slide, I'm gonna say first, before we really talk, dive in deep to this, I wanna say that this certainly doesn't happen by accident. It's the support of the board, it's the support of Dr. Cleveland, it's the support of Shannon Tisher and Melissa Feing and Dr. Smith, it's the support of Kendrick Clay, it's the support of building administrators, it's the support of parents. It all is this team effort to make all of this happen. And I wanna say, these numbers represent dedication, perseverance, and opportunity for kids. Opportunity. And that opportunities to perform at state and national events, which these groups have done. Also, opportunity to earn college scholarships. And this is my favorite part, because I got two in college right now. So I can't wait to say this. It's an opportunity to earn college scholarships to pursue whatever career they want to pursue. Okay? On somebody else's dime. Right? Using somebody else's money to go to school to be a doctor, lawyer, accountant, nurse, whatever you wanna do, play in the band, use that money to pay for your career to get out of school, you don't owe anybody anything. That is massively awesome. We're gonna start with Harper High School today. Seventy high school all-region students and 21 all-state students. Outstanding work there. Next school? Do I have the clicker here where I can do it? Okay, perfect. Don Tyson School of Innovation, 54 junior high all-region. I remember we're six through 12 there, so we're gonna have junior high there whereas we wouldn't have that in some of the other high schools. Forty-four high school all-region, 14 all-staters. Which button is it, just the arrow? Boom, I got it. Springdale High School, 49 high school all-region, three all-staters. Great work there as well. Lakeside Junior High Band, 23 junior high all-region players. Southwest Junior High School Band, 36 all-region players. And I'm gonna say this too. I tasked band and choir directors, it's probably been a year or two ago, right? With just getting their message out more. And they did all this work on these flyers for their kids to recognize all this stuff, on their concerts, all of that. You should see, some of the stuff I'm seeing now is like, what? This looks professionally done. I mean, like, they're doing... They've done some great work on that as well, the recognition piece. George Junior High School Band, eight junior high all-region, great work there. Central Junior High School, 80 junior high all-region students there. District choir students for SWATCA. This is, I'm gonna let Clint just describe this, because I always kinda mess this up when I say it. So I want you to just describe what an honor it is for these kids to make this...
We're the Southwest Region American Horror Group Association, so seven states, like Oklahoma, New Mexico, Kansas, Texas, Colorado, Missouri, and Arkansas. And they send in recorded tapes, and then they get judged, ranked, and then they get to enter these choirs. Then they go for a three-day conference and they study with some of the best teachers in the world. And they perform in some of the neatest venues. We do this every other year for SWATCA. Last year was a national, so every other year is a national. And our Harper singers were invited to premiere the Raven Rock Commission on the title Silver Rain by Hunter Thomas. And we're the first high school that has ever premiered a Raven Rock Commission at Southwest, so it's kind of a cool experience for kids. We had two overnight bus trips, lived down the hill, seven miles.
Thank you, Mr. King-Ansel. Harper High School had 113 all-region qualifiers and then also 42... and then also 42 all-state qualifiers. I just wanna say, this is, everybody say four-peat for me. Four-peat, this is the fourth year in the road that the Harbor High Schools had the most all-state singers in the state of Arkansas. So four-peat, four rings on the fingers there. Don Tyson School of Innovation Choir, 39 junior high all-region, 25 all-region, high school all-region, and 11 all-state. And then Springdale High School Choir, 31 all-region players, singers, and then four all-state singers as well. Lakeside Junior High School, right here, Rachel Cornet, 30 junior high all-region singers. And then also Southwest Junior High School, 39 all-region singers there as well. And then George Junior High School, 16 all-region singers there. And last but not least, Central Junior High School, 43 all-region singers. I wanna say this, that I really meant that when I say I get to come to work and do this every day and work with these fantastic folks. I learn from them every day, hopefully they learn a little bit from me in that process as well. These are great team members, they really work as a team well. There's a lot of districts where band and choir do not work well together. This is a great, about five years ago, we tore down all those walls as it relates to any kind of east-west, we're just one program. We serve all kids, and we serve together. And they are just the epitome of great leadership. So I take my hat off to them and just say, great job, wonderful job. I'm gonna let you guys come up front here. I have any questions in my head, or comments?
I don't know, I mean, you guys do this every year. I mean, it's amazing. I'm sure the other districts hate y'all. You guys do so great every year, but keep doing it. There's nothing wrong with being the best. So you guys have been the best since I was at high school. So, you guys are awesome. Appreciate all the work you do.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Yep, thank you. Appreciate you. Thanks for being here. Thank you all for being here.
But I think there's more of a story there with Tripp than the slide. Slide down a hill and we can hear that full story.
Okay, bumped up Ms. Clay, to come forward. We have a, consider a 24-25 academic calendar. She can talk to you about, Ms. Lexi can't be here tonight. She was, I think there was a weather issue with her.
Yes, yes, Lexi cannot be here tonight. There was a weather issue with her getting home. But she has been so wonderful in this process of trying to get an academic calendar for next year. And you'll remember that just last month, I was here asking for some calendar approval exceptions for this cal, this school year calendar due to some inclement weather. We immediately launched into, actually, there was already work happening on next year's academic calendar. And now we are ready to present that to you. I believe that you have both proposed calendars. And just a reminder of the process that goes into that, both PPCs, the classified and certified, have members of their group that serve on a calendar committee, so a smaller group of the larger PPCs, that work through teacher input, all of the laws and rules about how many days we have to have when, and when we can start, and when we have to have spring break. They work closely with Dr. Smith to make sure they've gotten all the numbers right, and that all the requirements are met. And then they put the suggested calendars out for a vote. You'll remember that last month, we, you all also approved seeking a waiver of the start date for the school year for next year. And that was approved just for next year. So if we need to explore that again going forward, we'll have to. The state board approved it for one year. And so the calendars in your packet reflect that earlier start date. One is a start date of August 12th for students, and the other is a start date of August 13th, which under the, the current law, without that waiver, the 19th would have been the earliest day that we could start. The, both of these calendars incorporate the 1,068 instructional hours that will allow some flexibility already to be embedded for inclement weather next year. Now, how that looks as far as makeup, or if makeup happens, or if AMI days happen, we don't know yet. That'll be a call that Dr. Cleveland will, will work with the team and seek guidance from you all as we approach inclement weather next year. You know, a lot of it depends on when it happens, how many days we have. But do know that that flexibility is already built in to this calendar, and that's not something that we would have to come and seek a waiver for next year, because if approved, the, we would just be able to declare that by July 1, and that's what the legal requirement is. So know that that flexibility is already embedded. I believe you also have a sheet that shows the differences between the two calendars, kind of this easy comparison sheet, if you all have looked at that. And once the calendar committee comes up with the proposed calendars, they do send them out to all staff for, oh, you don't? Here, you can have mine.
It came out in an email.
It did.
And I mean, you can, you can look and see the difference, but that table's really helpful for me just to kinda visualize. So, once the calendars were sent out to staff, we received 1,585 responses. 67.9% were in favor of Calendar B, and the remaining 32.1% were in favor of Calendar A. So the, the request here today from you all is to approve an academic calendar. You certainly have the two in front of you. You also have the flexibility to do something different. My only caution would be, we need to make sure it meets all the requirements that are there for number of days in a quarter, number of days slash hours in the school year, spring break, start dates, all that kinda stuff. Did you have a question?
I do. Do we know, like, is this the difference between those that chose A versus B? Do we know, is it heavy one way towards elementary, towards junior, or is it mixed, or do we know?
We don't know. It's, the, the form is a simple email, pick A or B. So I don't have that data. That's a good.
I thought we had in the past, we had known, you know, like, one year, it seemed to be more heavy towards high school, and one year towards the upper grades, and one year more heavy towards the elementary. That's just what I said. We don't really know that.
We don't know on this one.
So with 1,576 responses, that's what, about 50%?
A little bit over, yeah.
A little 50%? But it's two to one on Calendar B, over two to one on Calendar B. Board, does anybody have any questions or concerns about this?
Are there any other districts that applied for the waiver to start early? That you know of?
Yes, there were a lot. And I'll, I'll be really honest, I wasn't entirely clear about who all was asking for the waiver that day, but I believe there were over 100-something districts asking for the early start date. We attended by Zoom, and in order to allow maximum flexibility, they, the state board accepted paperwork kinda right up to the last minute. So I'm not sure who all else, but a substantial amount, yeah.
How about our neighbors? Yeah. I believe our co-op, I think every school district in our co-op, we already didn't have the waiver, did it as a co-op. We all requested that as a group. So pretty much all 16 districts that are part of the co-op now have that waiver. If there is not any more questions or concerns, we do need to take action on the calendar, correct?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve the 24-25 Academic Calendar B.
So we have a motion by Mr. Emerson, and a second by Mr. Bell to approve Calendar B for the 24-25 school year. All those in favor of that, please say aye. Anybody opposed to that? We got Calendar B for now.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Ellis? Mr. Ellis is here for workforce development update?
Good morning, Board. Just gonna highlight a few events for you that's going on in the district. So, we've got the Venture Career Center, LPN Pathway, that's now established through N-WAC, a big mention. And, I need to click that link. What that shows is a highlight of that document that basically, we started presenting options for our, there you go, options for our, nevermind. So, options for our ninth-grade students to take foundations of healthcare. And what that means is that for us to get in sync with N-WAC's medical program, we had to start offering some of those prerequisites early. So, they'll take foundations of healthcare, medical terminology, then they can take anatomy and physiology, but that will help us offer that first cohort, which will graduate in December 2025, to be setting for that potential LPN exam. So that's a big benefit to us through the Venture Career Center. So all of our high schools that teach those foundational medical courses, now that will allow some of our ninth graders from all our junior high feeders to attend their, their high school to take that foundations of healthcare. So we're targeting rising ninth graders for that currently. Another piece of that medical partnership underneath that is an MOU that we established. So we have Mercy onboard that's gonna allow us, that's a pinch point for a lot of these nursing programs, but they're gonna allow us for our, our students in our EMR, EMT, our Practical Nursing Pathway, and our CNA to practice in their clinicals from 17 on, which was a big step for us to get them in the door earlier. And then also our E for Business program, which we've heard you talking, we've talked to you about, Rodrigo Solis was here, and we recognized him. So I'd just like to give a shout out to Maddie Steele at Harbor. She's one of our lead intern teachers there, and also was a former business teacher. She's worked across the district. They had their first pitch contest, kinda like Shark Tank. And so all the, the business programs across the district met. They had a competition, took their best students, and now they're gonna have a final pitch day, which I'll send you the information for that. But I think that's a cool thing for our students and for E for All. Rodrigo is gonna bring in mentors and business partners who will also come in and, on the backside of that, interview some students from that process, potentially give them placement opportunities and work with them if they decide to pursue entrepreneurship track. So I think that's really good for our, our students. That's a part that Trent and I worked together on with Rodrigo Solis. And so, then the Be Pro, Be Proud State Chamber Day is May 2, May, let's see, I got that wrong, it's April 10. And so, that is something that we've been working towards throughout the year, where we'll have a lot of our seniors who've used science to come in and interview with partners. And we're working with our local chamber, the state chamber, so we have a business and industry partner list. That's a big event that will happen regionally. And currently, we have 150 seniors that are targeted to sit down and interview in that event. We're gonna take a group that by specific training, and we'll target them to entry-level positions with companies. And I think a key to that, just like Damon was talking about earlier, a lot of our partners will continue to pay for them to further their education. So that's kind of that step for our students above fast food and retail. And then May 2, we will have a district signing day for all of our work-based learning students who placed. We had our first annual one last year. We'll have that at the Springdale High School gym. And we'll send you an invite to that. That's really a recognition of all our students and business and industry partners who've worked with us to place students throughout the year. And then, we've been involved in some regional workforce meetings. Dr. Cleveland and administrative staff here with Dr. Smith and Ms. Tisher. And that's taking the model that we've been working on, kind of redefining our CTE pathways. We've started to offer some different options, and we're continuing to offer more that tie into concurrent credit, like that LPN pathway through N-WAC. And so out of that, what our goal is, is to, you know, we're here located logistically in the center of everything in the region, to provide some different training options for our students and adults, but to become, hopefully, a big piece of that conversation in the region as things are developing, to, to look at a hub and spoke system that could benefit the whole region. So then last, I'm really excited about a lot of these things, but adult training to me is something that I'm always looking for ways to give our parents and partners a chance to upskill. So this month, we were able to offer our first machining training in the evenings. And we're doing that at School of Innovation in the Venture Career Center. So Chad Burkett's father-in-law, who is a 30-plus-year machinist, actually wanted to teach. And so he's doing that for five adults over there, two nights a week, from four to nine. And then next week during spring break, I've told you before, but Phillips Corporation is a huge CNC partner with us. They distribute a lot of Haas machines. We're an R&amp;D facility, our center for them at Venture Career Center, which means we get to see the newest and greatest machines, our kids do. They get to see a lot of the controls engineers and specialists working with the machines, and then they'll repackage those up, send them out, sell them. So they get to see a lot of really unique technology. But Haas will be doing a training there next week for adults at Conneer and from Kennametal. So, those kinda things that we're working for as part of that, I think, a directive in that regional workforce. I've been having some meetings with the U of A Global Campus to figure out how we can get some funding to offer some of these opportunities to our parents. You've heard us mention Parent University. They come to a lot of our Parent University events during the evenings. We've had that in engineering and some STEM programs and our skilled trades. And the parents wanna know, how do I get this kinda training? So that's an option that we're looking on how we can do that and start offering that on off, you know, off of our normal schedule to some of our parents, which I think would greatly benefit our community. So that's a lot, but it's hopefully quick. So you have any questions? And I'm sorry that I did not open up all those links for you, so.
Something I'd like, just reiterate. The wonderful thing that you as a board have done for a long time, even boards before you all collected, was that you focused on students making it through a career. I mean, through a career, not just two to one. Over the years, the focus has been historically in public schools, or even private schools or wherever, is the diploma. What happens after the diploma? Well, it's up to the child, up to the parent, all those things. With what you've done, which is so different from everywhere else, is you start the opportunity for kids to have a diploma plus. A diploma plus a step. Diploma, the step, 100% of our kids are either gonna go to college or straight into a high-skill, high-paying career that may even entail college or post-secondary education or the military, 100% of our kids. Whereas in the past, it's been, how many kids do we have that go to college? 36%. What happens to the rest? What do we do? So the opportunity at diploma plus, sometimes people may say, well, the Springdale schools, all they really care about is CTE. No, we do it all, 100% of it. It's CTE, it's college, it's career of some sort. So I wanna thank you as a board for that vision and to get that done. We wanna make sure that our, our message is, Springdale Schools does it all, and does it really well. If you wanna be, if you wanna be a world-class musician, come to Springdale Schools. If you wanna be a high-powered athlete, if that's a small percentage, but you can still do it at Springdale Schools. If you wanna follow your life's pursuit, whatever that is, you do it at Springdale Schools. And, you know, you're, you're a destination district, and we wanna make sure that we do a better job messaging all of the things that we do. And so, we appreciate our leadership team, Mr. Ellis, and all of the, the teachers throughout the district helping make that happen. That's a big deal. So, thank you for, thank you, Board. While she's on her way, the Learns Act changed some things. One of the things that Learns Act changed is presenting in front of you, and have you approved contracted employees for the next year? So tonight, we have a list of those contracted employees. It may not be a full list, there's still some people maybe working on their certifications or other things, or just hadn't, hadn't got there yet. But we have a preliminary report to offer contracts for current staff on the list in this place here to help us navigate through this new law change. And it is a little different, so, Ms. Clay?
Yeah, so this feels a little bit like the Wild, Wild West. This is a new process for everyone in that with the Learns Act, teacher fair dismissal. This is a new process for everyone in that with the Learns Act, Teacher Fair Dismissal and Public School Employee Fair Hearing Act were both repealed. Part of those laws were an automatic renewal of school employee contracts. So, from year to year, you all never saw a rehire list because there wasn't a need to be rehired because the contract automatically renewed unless you took action to non-renew it. And that changed in that there is no automatic renewal of classified or certified employee staff. So, for us to rehire our staff, we need affirmative action to do that from you all. So, the list that is attached here was based off of employees who have completed their intent-to-return forms that are sent out. If you're not familiar with those, we have done this long before the process changed. But a form goes out to employees that say, hey, what's your plan for next year? Do you want to come back? Do you want to retire or do you want to resign? And those employees check which one applies to them so that the business office knows how to start moving forward on their contracts. And so, I believe we have a fairly large percentage of employees that have completed these. If someone is not on this list, and it could be for a number of reasons, okay? And it doesn't necessarily mean that they're not going to get a contract next year. We made a commitment to our staff when this law changed that anybody who was not getting a contract next year through action that was not their own choice would not be surprised, that it would be a part of ongoing conversations over the course of the year, and that when it came to the list, you know, we don't have people searching as quick as they can for the list to see if they're on the list. They'll know if they're on the list, they'll know if they're not on the list, basically. So, the people you see on the list tonight are people who have completed their intent to return that they want to return. So, some outstanding issues that may mean that someone is not on the list could be that they've resigned or retired. Could be that even though there's very few that this would fit in this category, through situations that have happened through the year, they know that they're not in a position to be recommended for a contract. But like I said, very few fit into that category. You're also going to have some, like Dr. Cleveland said, that are working towards making sure they have all their licensure in place. And then you also may have some that are on an improvement plan that requires them to complete the semester before we know if a contract's going to be offered. You can see just by the number of employees listed, I think it's 24, 2500. There aren't many people that aren't on the list, is, is what I'm getting at. So, what I anticipate happening moving forward is that as, and this goes into a little bit of the resolution to hire new staff, is that as Dr. Cleveland begins to make recommendations to hire new staff, the authority to offer a contract to them really comes from you all. Having to wait until we see you all once a month to offer a contract to staff that we're wanting to bring on can be problematic. And so, the second piece of this agenda item, which would be a separate motion, is a resolution to give, and I'll explain and then go back to, oops, I'm doing the wrong thing, and then go back to ask you for questions and for motions. But the resolution included would be to give Dr. Cleveland the authority to offer contracts to new staff that he is recommending to hire, with the idea that he has that authority, and then we would bring you a list of who those people are, likely each month, because it'll be, it'll start rolling in here pretty soon. So, then you all will officially approve that. That gives him some flexibility to go ahead and say to those people, hey, you got a contract in Springdale, we want you here, so that they're not saying, well, you know, the neighbor district's already offered me this contract. So, a little bit different process. Everybody is doing it, all the other districts are doing it pretty similarly. There's some little differences in the process, but like I said, we're all learning. This is new for everyone. So, when you are ready to vote, I would ask for two separate votes. One, to offer the contracts to the current staff members that are listed in the agenda item. And then the second vote would be to approve the resolution to give Dr. Cleveland the authority to offer contracts to new staff. And then you would see those, the list of those employees each month. So, what questions do you have? Yeah, I know, it's like, it's a lot.
And I don't even know that this is necessarily this, something that you could pull from that, but how many of our new teachers are we retaining? Or do we know?
I don't know. I, I think we could probably pull that, but I, I don't know. Yeah, that's, that's interesting.
I mean, like their first, and I shouldn't say new to, not necessarily new to district, but new as in this was their first year teaching.
New to profession?
New to profession.
Okay, I'll see if we have.
I'm curious if, what the, because I did see a few that were not on that list, and so I was curious and I would be curious to follow.
Yeah, one thing I need to mention too is that some, and some that are in that category may have fit here. Sometimes when teachers come to us, especially brand-new teachers, they might be on a one-year-only contract where they're covering a leave of absence or the position, for whatever reason, is a one-year-only position. So, that may be the case on some that, for whatever reason, the position's not there. But I'll see if we can dial into that, because I think that's good information.
We can also pull that from their resource, like if they're ESER, we know, and they know too, when they sign the contract, that those ESER-type positions would not be there. They're certainly welcome to apply for other positions from the district. Any more questions, board? If not, I would entertain a couple of motions.
I make a motion that we offer contracts to the list. Current.
Do we have to say something?
Get him down on the second.
Oh, I don't. I make a.
So, we have a motion from Mrs. Cook and a second from Mrs. Creek to offer contracts to the list that we have that apparently said yes, that they want to come back. Is there any other discussion on that before we take a vote on it? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed to that? Okay, now we need motion number two.
I'll move to approve the resolution, operating additional contracts.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Bell and a second by Mr. Emerson to give Dr. Cleveland the authority to hire new staff as he sees fit. Any other discussion about that? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Anybody opposed to that? There you go.
All right, thank you.
I'll be bringing you back those lists as we start other contract opportunities. So, really, it's offering the contract, you have to refi it, or you don't. So, thank you for that. All right, Trent.
Go, Trent.
He's putting you up, Mr. Jones. You've got 35 seconds.
Good evening, board. Good evening, Dr. Cleveland. Thank you very much.
There you go.
He's like, that's never gonna happen.
That's right. I have the great privilege tonight of talking about a few things that we're working on. I'm very excited to share with you. First things first, the Annie Liebovitz event beyond the lens. The Springdale School District and Crystal Bridges partnered together to do several things through this program. I'm very proud of the work that we did. We worked with our friends at Crystal Bridges to promote the event, and we helped end up getting about 1,000 students to participate. And about 10%-ish or so were from Springdale Schools. That's a great, that's a great number. So, the students went through a program where they got to meet with local photographers, they got to hear from Annie Liebovitz herself, and then they took a photograph that answered the question, who are we? And then it culminated over, I mean, it was many months, and it culminated in a, a, a grand reveal at the very end where they got a book and they were able to all get together in the Great Hall at Crystal Bridges. And what was really neat was we did a wraparound service where a student intern through Rodney at Don Tyson School of Innovation, Michael Ariola, who works in my department, he shot video through all of those events throughout the many months, and he made a documentary along with Crystal Bridges. And so, that aired in the Great Hall as well, which was super cool. And through that, we have, we've always had a good relationship with Crystal Bridges, but we've really strengthened our relationship. And so, tonight, joining us is Orlando Graves Bolognes from Crystal Bridges, and I would like for him to just talk a little bit about our partnership, if you don't mind. Orlando?
Thank you, Mr. Jones, aboard, Dr. Cleveland. Yes, it's, it's wonderful to be able to come in and say thank you and, and show our appreciation for the partnership and for the, just the really interesting ways in which we can partner. You know, this, this partnership and this project of mentoring, like, ties into so many things that are being discussed this evening. So, you know, it's also workforce development for, for, for the creative industries that exist in the, in, in the region, and at present, we're having to import us into the region, right? So, creatives are bringing, brought from outside instead of being prepared for the field. So, it's wonderful to, to get to participate with you on that. I just wanted to mention two other projects that are, that are upcoming and just reinforce the, 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 the level of partnership that already exists. 30 students from, tomorrow, 30 students from Archer Learning Center will be at Crystal Bridges for a special workshop. It's a, it's quite exclusive. They are going to spend some time with Christian Cooper, who is a well-known science writer and birdwatcher, and they will be doing a workshop with him at Crystal Bridges tomorrow. So, like, these are really interesting opportunities to get to see and hear from our special guests at the museum, and then for us to pass on that, that opportunity to students from Springdale. Another one that I think I would be remiss in not mentioning is a three-way partnership with the University of Arkansas, with the, the Early Childhood Educator and Professor Donna Owen, obviously Springdale, and Crystal Bridges. We're all partnering together to bring on April 2nd, all second-grade students from all eight elementary schools will be attending the museum on a Tuesday. Tuesdays of the day, we're closed. It's a special day. You get to see some of the magic and you get to see how, how the magic happens, right? But the reason that they're coming is because they're going to be, they're going to be spending the morning with the writer, the, uh, book writer, Darcy Patterson. She is the author of a children's book called Friday Comes on Tuesday. And this is a fictional depiction of a, of a dog named Friday that comes to the museum on Tuesday and visits the museum and explores the collection. And so, this, this story will be part of their tour. They'll get to actually see the works that are in, in the book. They'll be doing a reading and a conversation with the author, and then all 800 students will go home with a copy of the book. So, we're thrilled to be able to celebrate learning, create an inspirational opportunity, and then to reinforce the work that Dr. Owen is doing with the district around the science of reading. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Very cool.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, sir. I really am very thankful to be a partner. And what's really neat about that, what he was talking about is piggybacking on what Rodney was talking about, about pushing in skills into as deep as you can go into classes. You think about having second graders there and just that experience that could spark imagination in them forever. So, I just love this partnership. So, thank you to Crystal Bridges. And that, that all kind of dovetails together with everything we're talking about tonight. I put in front of you tonight a copy of our new Welcome magazine. We are rolling this out. It's a really large, comprehensive program, but essentially, here it is in a nutshell. I think all of us know that Northwest Arkansas is growing, and Mr. Bolognes was, was alluding to that as well, that, that he moved here from out of the region. So, a lot of people are moving here from out of the region, and what we need to help them understand is our public schools here are top-notch. They exist and they're fantastic. They always have been and they always will be. So, we're trying to help people know that when they come here, much like Dr. Cleveland was saying, you can get world-class academics, athletics, visual, fine arts, workforce. We teach the whole child careers here in Springdale. You can spend your whole career serving our community and have a high quality of life. So, that's part of, you're seeing the tip of the iceberg there with the magazine. You're, that's part of this initiative where we're helping to build that capacity with people to understand that here's our talking points. And I think everybody needs to know the brand of Springdale is Springdale Family. And I spent many years going through different circles, talking to people, you know, talk to me about what Springdale means to you. And everybody from every walk, whether they've been here for six decades or six months, they all say the same thing. We all really care about each other, so we're very welcoming. We take care of each other. So, the Welcome magazine, very proud of my team. Leslie Orozco laid it out and took a lot of the photos. Mary wrote a lot of that. So, I'm really grateful for them. The Chamber of Commerce is partnering with us to help. So, thank you to the chamber. Do you have any questions about the magazine? Okay, good, thank you. How am I doing on time, Mr. President?
You're good.
Thank you.
You're past your 30-second.
I have, I've gone a little bit past it. Wrapping in with the same theme of just amplifying and creating brand ambassadors, we created a program called the Springdale Spotlight, and it's really simple. If you take a photo and you post it, or something with Springdale Schools, you post it on any platform, hashtag Springdale Family, once a month, we scour Springdale Family posts and we pick one to highlight them as a winner. And then they get this really cool prize pack. So, they get a bag and a mug and a shirt, and then we take photos of them and we put them on our social media. And we saw that there was 300% increase, because people love free stuff, of course, and they love swag. We saw there was a 300% increase in the usage of our hashtag Springdale Family. So, if you could help us, you're at the top, if you could help amplify that, help people understand about what we are and what our brand is, and to share that Springdale story by using the hashtag, I sure would appreciate it. Our next one will come out, I think, the last Thursday in March. So, we'll do it until May, and then we'll take a pause, and then we'll start again in August. Do you have any questions on Springdale Spotlight? All right, now, this is just operational for you. Mr. Hutchinson and I were talking about this here several weeks ago, and I thought this was important for you all to know. One of the things we continue to try to do is become more efficient in our communication strategies to make sure that everyone is receiving information. Some of that we went through with, you know, the inclement weather and just different kinds of promotions and just making sure. So, I wanted to just give a, just a brief overview. Happy to go into any detail that you want, but here's some email that, that we've included for people. So, our new email clients, we've, we have three email clients. So, we have MailChimp, Smore, and Peachjar. Those three clients have three different types of topics, but they all go to all parents and guardians synced with e-school and all employees. And then one of the things we tried to do was reduce the amount of emails that the communications office sends. So, we send, if there is something happening, we send two a day. So, that's on there for you to look at, which is 11 and three, Monday through Friday. Now, if something's not happening, which, as you know, in a district our size, something's always happening, but if something's not happening, I won't send an email during that time. So, just kind of a general overview for you. All parents and guardians, all employees, we can group it, we're getting to where we can group it, and we can really target our stuff. So, say for example, X Elementary has Eat at Slim's Night or whatever. And so, instead of me sending it everywhere across the whole district, we can help them really focus in on their feeder patterns and really help them be targeted in their delivery of, of flyers. So, MailChimp is a client that's our live, that's our live stuff, so live athletics, live fine arts, video productions. And since we do a lot of live, a lot of those emails go out. And, and I've, I've explained this to several parents, but I wanted to explain it to you as well. If a parent says, well, I don't want to see all the live stuff, they can unsubscribe from MailChimp. I don't want them to, but they can. They can unsubscribe from MailChimp, and it's district-wide, right? So, they can still get the Smores, they can still get Peachjar, they'll still get their building-level stuff, it's just district-wide, okay? The, the Smores, I think everybody knows this, we do feature story, timely recognitions, critical information, and then Peachjar is something we're rolling out, and that's going to be a flyer client that will go out. So, like your summer camps, you know, the fundraisers, those kinds of things are going to start getting pushed in through Peachjar. I think that's it for me, yes. Does anyone have any questions? I know I zipped through that, but should you have any questions or feedback or need anything or explanations or whatever, just call anytime you want. And thank you for letting me have the great honor of marketing our district and telling the great stories of the work we all do. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Trent.
Thanks. Good job, Trent.
Good job.
I apologize for not getting my items grouped together under my section. But here I am again for the last time tonight. This time requesting to seek approval for the personnel policy proposals. Now, this is a little bit different process than we've done in the past. This is the process that we started using last year, where basically you approve the policies twice. So today would be approving them as proposals. We would get feedback from PPC and others that see them posted on the agenda and then bring them back to you next month for final approval. Because the PPC, the certified PPC does not meet in March, these have actually already been shared with the certified PPC, so we should, we could start gathering that feedback. Haven't gotten any feedback yet, but I did present them to the certified PPC at their February meeting. These changes are specific to personnel policy, and the reason for that is personnel policies need to be approved by May 1st to be incorporated into the contracts without a vote of the staff. And so we're on kind of a timeline that we've got to get moving on. I do anticipate some other policies that are not personnel-related to come to you later in the spring, but these, I wanted to pull out and make sure we comply with the timelines that are required. Most of them are, there were changes recommended by ASBA or changes that have come up as issues have arisen over the past year. For example, adding the ability to count teachers' out-of-country experience for their years of experience. Our current policy doesn't allow that, and we have had that come up in the past year and wanted to be able to reward. It's actually two teachers that have some out-of-country experience that we want to be able to compensate for. I did get some questions on, from PPC during the meeting about the Staff Development Institute. If you're not familiar with that, SDI credit, it's kind of a, an older process that allows a teacher to make a lane change based on professional development activities. It's a really difficult policy to manage because somebody has to go through pretty much line by line, page by page, see what the activity was, make sure the person didn't count it for professional development in other contexts, make sure they weren't on a contract day. It's really, we're the only district in the area that still has that. We, the question I got from PPC was, will we still get lane changes for education? Yes, absolutely. The idea is now that your lane change would only come from education, not from professional development-type activities. It would be from continuing college credits. And, and the expiration is for June 30th of 2027. So it gives people time, if they were planning on doing some SDI credit to make a lane change, they can do it until June 30th of 2027, and then it would, would fade away. So I did get a few questions about that. The other one that is not an ASBA-recommended policy change is the continuing education grants. We allow some funding for employees currently only classified, or certified employees who are working on continuing education. They can apply for a grant, and it's, it's limited funding, but it is available. Our classified PPC asked if that could be extended to them as well, because there are employees who want to work on continuing education that would advance them in their roles, and we thought that was a great idea. So the policy is a copy of the certified one moved into the classified section so that they'll have that opportunity as well. So again, this is just the initial proposals. I'll be back next month asking for approval of the final version. So if you all have questions that come up over the next month or suggest, suggested changes, please let me know, and I'll be working with the PPCs and others that see these that have questions as well. Do you have any questions today? Okay. Then I would ask that you approve these policy changes as proposals.
I'd like to motion that we approve the proposed personnel policy changes.
All right. We have a motion by Mrs. Creek, a second by Mr. Emerson to approve the personnel policy proposals. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed?
Got it.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Cleveland, Board. There are four items that we're going to discuss tonight. I'm going to do a quick overview of Atlas, the writing assessment, and then Mr. Paul Miller is going to give an overview on the technology. Ms. Fink is going to talk a little bit about the top-of-the-robe reading curriculum, and then Jeremy White is going to talk a little bit about construction. I just wanted you to be aware of this. As you know, the testing season has started. The writing, the Atlas Writing Assessment is new this year. We didn't really know what to expect. It has been phenomenal. I just wanted you to know, tomorrow is the last day. I printed this out yesterday, and you can see every one of our schools had at least the 95% tested, if not way above, and they're still getting students in, but this is amazing. And I wanted to share just a few thoughts. I reached out to some of the testing administrators, and I said, can you just give me your feedback on how the testing went? They said, first of all, it went phenomenally. The students worked really hard. Teachers loved it. The teachers were able to run their own sessions, which is kind of new. They said they had no glitches in any of the assessments. They were able to really create groups that really worked best for the students. And so it's different, because before we had to have certain groups set certain ways. They were able to make some adjustments. And then the big thing was, a lot of times in the past, we had certain things in an IEP or five or four to give extended time. In this one, there, it wasn't timed, and so this was huge for a lot of our students. So success, I think a few of the, the people that I work closely with told me how their children did, and they said they did really well. So we're expecting positive things coming from the Atlas Writing. So more on the other tests coming soon, but I wanted to give you an update. Tomorrow, we'll close the laptop for the writing assessment.
Is that replacing the test? Or is that?
So, yes. So the Atlas is the new state assessment that we're using this year. So this is, this-
It's Spire.
Yeah.
That's, I couldn't remember what it was called.
And they have the writing assessment, which is very new. It was a specific question. Anyway, okay. Well, at this time, I'm going to have Mr. Miller come forward and share the amazing things happening in the technology world.
Good evening, Board. Dr. Cleveland, I just wanted to spend a few minutes to talk about the Technology Department, give you a little bit of a snapshot of what we have going on. So just a quick overview, this is our team as it stands today. So it looks like a lot of names, but it's about 15 people to run all the technology from the district level for all, oh, little over 100,000 devices that we manage. So lots of stuff going in and out, lots of things happening. So we, I wanted to highlight a few different things, because over the years, we've, we've really tried to kind of standardize and simplify our operations, because we're a small force. So we've tried to really look at how we do things and, and how we're structured and organized into a way that makes sense and is easy to, to manage. And so the first part is our data center that we've got. So we've got a hyper-converged data center, which means it's a, several different servers that run a bunch of virtual servers. So we have 88 virtual servers that run on those six boxes that are pictured there, and the bottom one is our backup for the other ones. And so we've had those in place for about five years. And so in that five-year window, we budgeted out for support and for all the different things we needed for those boxes. And now that we're at the end of that five years, it's time to start planning a refresh for this technology. And so what we did to extend the life of that is we purchased another calendar year, another 12 months of support on the, this equipment to allow us to better plan for what we're going to do to replace all this equipment moving forward. And so we want to be the best stewards that we possibly can with district funds. And so we're trying to really do our research and figure out what's going to be best for our students and for our district as we plan this out for the upcoming year. So if you don't have any questions on that, I'll move on to the next slide.
I wouldn't even know what to ask.
All right.
Mr. Bell's holding back.
Clinton probably does.
All right. Next, we have our digital displays, and I just wanted to mention this, because we have one of these in almost every classroom in the district, and they're on about a 10-year lifecycle. And so we purchase a few of these at a time for new construction as it happens, but we, we pretty much set them and forget them for about 10 years. And so it, it's really cost-effective for us to be able to use them. It increases functionality and flexibility in a classroom so that they can kind of move these around as they need to, they can connect to it, the students can connect to it and project whatever they need to on it to enhance the learning that's happening in the classroom. So if we continue, our, our wireless that we have in the district, so 2023, we implemented a huge restructure of our wireless. We replaced almost 1,700 access points. And what that did for us is it refreshed us for probably another 10 years. And so we've got a few stragglers out there as we finish out construction projects, so Central Junior High and Southwest Junior High. The old parts of those buildings are running on our oldest access points. And so basically what that means is that yesterday, we switched over Central to a new connection. We had to reboot some equipment, and so some of the access points went, hey, we're 10 years old, we're not going to work anymore. And so we had to do some shifting quick to get certificates validated so that they would continue working for a little while longer till we can get into spring break and move them to the new facility, and then they'll have all new equipment over there. So we're, we're planning all these as they're occurring, and we're trying to get the most use we can out of the equipment that we have. Next, so 2024 marks 10 years since our initial Race to the Top Grant, which kicked us off into one-to-one. So 2024, we're now deep into this program, and every year, we replace about a fifth of our devices. And that keeps us on a five-year replacement cycle. And so Google has done us some favors by extending the support for Chromebooks. So we'll be, we could possibly get a little bit longer use out of those devices. But just to give you a little better understanding, what we do with our Chromebooks is we put them in students' hands for five years. And then after the usefulness in a student's hands is expended, we take those devices and we, we use them for various other things around the district. So we use them for time clocks in closets for custodians and classified employees. We use them for check-in, checkout at the front desks for students. And they use those devices for that extended period of time to really enhance and get as most, as much use as possible out of those devices. And so we, we get our money's worth out of them, but CTL is the brand that we're kind of evaluating for this year's lifecycle purchase, because we've, we've gone through all the other brands, and we found things that we like and don't like about all of them. And so we're exploring CTL for a couple different reasons. They, they're supposed to be a higher spec for their rigidity and their, just being able to withstand the day-to-day use in a student's hands. And then they've got a few other things that give us a little more functionality, like the camera rotates, so you can take pictures while you're looking at the screen instead of having to, to point your Chromebook at things. So a few different things, and we try and evaluate these to, to best enhance the learning as it happens in the classroom. So we're, we're always trying to provide technology resources as tools for students to use to enhance what they do. And so that's what we've got going on for student devices right now. Then, as far as our content filtering goes, we've had a few questions about this, so I wanted to, to bring this to you to clarify what we've got going on for the district. We use a few different companies to manage content and filter devices. And so there's significant difference between those two things, and some of the software that we use does both. And so Cisco Umbrella is provided to us by the state of Arkansas, and it's a content filter only. So it runs on our firewall, and it blocks content that students don't need to see. And so it's a SIPA-compliant filter, which is the Child Internet Protection Act. And so that's the filter that we use, and that's the first stop of data coming in or out of the district. Then we have GoGuardian, which is used as a classroom management tool, but also a SIPA-compliant filter. And so GoGuardian filters all of our Chromebooks that our students use. It does that while they're in school and while they're at home. And so Cisco Umbrella is an on-premises-only filter, so it only works if you're at one of our facilities. And then Bark is a early warning system specifically designed to monitor our Google enterprise. And so what it does is it monitors conversations that are had between students, it monitors emails they send, it monitors what they look at online, and it flags information that seems concerning. And so those reports are sent to administrators in the building and counselors so that they can interact with these students and try and be an early warning system to alleviate any problems that may occur later down the line. So any questions about those? Okay. And then the last thing we have is, so this year, we have a new state requirement called Act 754. And so what that does is it requires us to maintain a list of all applications that are used by the district that we provide student data to. So in legal speak or cybersecurity speak, student data is called PII. And so that's all the data that we provide, and depending on who you talk to, you can have really long arguments about what PII actually is and how much we provide is considered PII. And so that would be like first name, last name, email address, phone number, actual physical address, all of those details that somebody could put together to formulate or combine to make an identity of a person. And so those are all personally identifiable information is what that is. And so we maintain this list so that we can provide it if requested from us. And this is a list of all the software that we use that we provide any data to. And so our systems that we have in place, we synchronize data between all of our e-school data and then all of our applications that we provide for student use that enhance the learning in the classroom. And I think, there you go. So if there are no questions, that's all I have for you tonight.
Sounds like you have an easy job.
No problem.
I know you don't, because you're in our leadership meeting going every Friday, so. We're very fortunate to have Mr. Miller. I say he's a lot like Clint Bailey, gets flown out of black helicopters to DC and other things, but he really does. He's got a master's degree in cybersecurity, or in the military. Sometimes you go places you can't tell us, all of those kinds of things. That's all I'm sure you're right. So anyway, we're very fortunate to have Mr. Miller. He does an excellent job. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'm here this evening to talk to you about, give you a very quick overview of the top-of-the-robe reading curriculum process. And I just wanted to start by explaining what I mean when I talk about top-of-the-robe. If you think about how a rope is made, a rope is very strong, but it's strong because when you start to unwind it, there's lots of different pieces that are wound together to make it a very strong thing that we can use. And same can be said for reading. This is what we call Scarborough's Rope. And Scarborough's Rope is made of bottom of the rope and the top of the rope. And if you look at the bottom, the bottom rope is our word recognition, so that's our phonics, our phonological awareness, it's how kids learn to read their sight words. And each of those little bitty pieces are braided together to make a smaller rope. And then you look at the top of the rope, and we have language comprehension. And that's, you know, how do we understand what it is we're reading? So the bottom of the rope really works on building those foundational skills. Top of the rope is how do we comprehend what it is we're reading, which is really why we read. We read so we can understand and make sense of our world. If you notice on this diagram- Um, if you notice on this diagram, our bottom of the rope, um, in the yellow box, we said phonics first and structures. About three years ago, uh, we invested heavily in this program. And, um, that is the program that we're using K eight to teach the bottom of the rope, or I'm sorry, K seven, bottom of the rope to our students. Um, we don't have a top of the rope curriculum. And so that's what we're in the process of, um, looking at right now. So the why, and I'm not going to read this to you, um, but just know that there is legislation that exists. Act 429 is the Right to Read Act. And then most recently, Act 237 is the Learns Act. And basically both acts, um, within the rules and the regs state that we have to have an approved curriculum by DESI, um, that we adopt, um, to teach the, to, to teach reading in kindergarten through sixth grade. And then this is just, um, something that I found when I was reading a guidance document about curriculum resources. And the question was posed, if a school does not have a program on the approved list, what are the next steps? And basically this says you need to adopt, um, a program from the approved list. And if not, um, there are sanctions. Um, there are ways that you can get, um, curriculum approved that's not on the list, but it's a very complicated process and one that we probably don't want to follow. Um, I've showed you this before. This is just a snapshot of what the reading approved curriculum looks like. And when you start to see the boxes, you know that the green boxes meet the DESI's requirements for the different components of science of reading, those things that make up the rope. Um, the yellow boxes, um, sort of kind of, um, meet the specifications. And then if nothing's checked, that program does not meet it. So it's really, you, you can't find any one curriculum that meets, um, that checks all the boxes green. So that's why we're having to look at two curriculums for our district. Um, so we are actually in the process of vetting two curriculums in Springdale. We have core knowledge, language arts, um, which you can tell is broken into two. There's K one and two. Um, core knowledge, language arts is very yellow. Um, and the very last box is checked green. I believe that's the comprehension. For three, four, and five, um, it's mostly green. Benchmark workshop for K two, um, couple of green boxes. But for our three, five, um, for all of the components that we need for the upper grades, everything is green. So those, those are the two curriculums that we're currently exploring. Um, just kind of our timeline, um, Dr. Smith and I have actually been talking about this for many years. Um, but we really started looking closely at it when the Learns Act, when the Learns Act was coming. So we began to investigate this. I was calling all of our neighboring districts, talking to the people that are in my seat in their districts, just asking them, what curriculum are you using? What do you think? Um, we then developed a principal committee, um, to begin the process of digging deeper into the curriculums. Um, we invited the textbook companies in to give our principals an overview of what the curriculums look like, um, what it looked like to implement the curriculums. Um, Benchmark Workshop actually sent, um, several different examples of grade level curriculums that they offer. Um, so we were able to see that CKLA sent us the codes for the digital part of their curriculum. Um, we actually did travel to districts to see these in action. So we went to grab it to observe Benchmark Workshop, um, in several different grade levels and did the same thing for CKLA in Salem Springs. And our principals were able to interact with teachers. They were able to interact with the principals and really get a true understanding of, of the glows and the grows of the program, like what was working, what wasn't working. Um, and then we, um, put together a, a reading textbook committee. Um, we also kind of simultaneously worked, um, with our pilot, our, our principals that were on the committee and created pilot schools. And we have teachers in our district that are piloting the program. Um, most of them chose Benchmark Workshop to pilot. And teachers from all across the district, regardless of whether they were in the pilot or not, were invited to come in and observe these lessons being taught. They actually sent representatives from the company to do model lessons, do some coaching for the teachers. And so we've had, um, up to twenty people in our classroom observing, um, these lessons being implemented. And then, um, this last week, or actually this week, we, um, had our first textbook committee meeting. We have principal, or principals, we have teachers, instructional facilitators from all elementary schools that will be learning more about these textbooks. Um, they will be able to ask questions of the representatives from the companies, um, talk to the teachers who have been piloting it. And we will conclude these committees on April second. Um, at the end of our committee time together, um, they will be asked to go back and collect information from their teachers or sharing information with their teachers. And we will give a feedback survey to see what, um, to see where our teachers are in this process and what they're thinking. And so we're hoping that sometime by mid-April, our district will have chosen a new top of the rope curriculum. Um, so, you know, one of the things people are super interested about is how are we going to train for this? Unlike Phonics First, it's not as labor and time intensive. Um, so it's not going to require five days of anybody's time. Um, in May, it is our goal to train trainers of trainers. And so our instructional facilitators in May will have a two-day training to be able to go back and lead the teachers through this process. And then in June, we're also going to open it up for our, um, teachers to come in and receive the training if they want to. If they want to use flex time, uh, flex requirement to come in and be a part of the training in the summer, we'll have those opportunities as well. Um, at your seat, I did, um, place an example of part of what the benchmark curriculum will look like for second through fifth grade. Again, I have not received any physical materials from the other companies. So I can't share any of that with you. Um, but this is actually what the students will receive, um, throughout the course of the year. There will be ten of these that the kids will receive. They're full of mentor texts, um, that the, the students can kind of work through. And this is very much a close analytical reading curriculum. And so if you open the cover of your magazine, you'll see that this little pamphlet will fold out. And it has all of the, um, um, all of the annotations that students need to be able to, um, do analytical, close reading of their text. And so the teachers have, um, teacher's guides that come with these. And so these are very engaging, um, reading materials. It looks very different from the reading book I had when I was in elementary school. And so there is no textbook that exists with this program. And the students actually get these really engaging magazines that kind of go back between science and social studies. Um, so are there any questions you have for me about the process? Hopefully, um, by the May board meeting, I'll be able to report to you what, what program was chosen.
How often do we have to go through this process?
It has been a long time since we've gone through this process in the district, um, because we've had our own curriculum. But because of all the new legislation that's coming at us with Learns and the Right to Read Act, our curriculum no longer serves the purpose that the state says it needs to serve. And so, um, depending on which company we go with, as long as they remain on the approved list, I don't foresee that we will have to go through this process in the very near future. But who knows?
Is there a question?
I, I know teachers are excited, um, about getting a curriculum. Um, in the, the textbook meeting that we had the other day, um, a lot of really good feedback from them. Um, they had some very good questions that they were asking. And so it really was a bucket filler for me to get to be part of that and just hear the excitement that they have about getting some resources in their hands to teach kids how to read.
Is the Science of Reading a program that doesn't meet requirements?
Well, the Science of Reading isn't a program. It's more of, um, kind of the pedagogy, the why behind we do what we do. Um, the state, um, passed the Right to Read Act, which requires all teachers to have some form of science of reading training. Um, and then they went through an approved curriculum that aligned to the, the science of the reading. Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Now we have the illustrious Jeremy.
Yeah.
Always.
Yeah. I've got a, I've got a construction update. Central Junior High, these pictures were taken yesterday. So, um, they're making a lot of progress there. Uh, this is the main office. So they, they've got it pretty much hundred, hundred percent complete. That's what the downstairs classrooms look like right now. That's, um, this is actually a sci- science room. This is a multi-use, uh, room that's on the first floor. And then you've got the fax room. So we've got appliances coming in, um, all the furniture is coming in right now. So, so I mean, the plan is, is tomorrow afternoon, we'll start moving about four fifteen. Start moving everybody's stuff over, um, hoping to have that done by Wednesday. And then Wednesday, we'll move into the old building and start removing all of the, uh, devices and, and, uh, material that we want out of the older, uh, building and get that ready to start demo on the twenty-fifth.
We're going to save everything in the older portion that we need, we can warehouse and all those things.
Yep, yep. So we've got a list. We walked the building with Todd and his team. And, um, got a list of everything we need, uh, to take down. Some of it will go into storage and it'll be available to the other schools. Um, some of it will go into storage and just, um, will be there for phase two. So it is really looking good. Now, the second floor is, is a little, it's behind. They're still painting up there. They're still putting in ceiling tiles and finishing that out. We will not get the C of O tomorrow. Um, but the city's going to go ahead and let us start moving in Friday afternoon. Um, insurance will change over on Friday and, uh, we'll get the C of O Saturday, uh, Monday morning.
So on the twenty-fifth, when you said they're going to start tearing stuff down, what, what are they gonna, what are they tearing down on the twenty-fifth?
So we'll start over where the band and the choir room are, on the, the southwest corner of the building. They'll work their way north and then they'll come back and work their way to the east. So it'll actually take about a week, uh, before the excavators start. They'll be prepping all of the inside, getting it ready for demo. Um, and that'll give me an extra week in case we need extra time to get our stuff out.
So when they're done, the wall to the gym will be, that's, that's there, that's it?
That'll get removed and get rebuilt, um, in a, in a new wall. And then, um, so right now, if you're walking and you've got the gym on this side, you've got a big block wall on the other side, that'll actually become a glass wall that, that faces Huntsville. So there, there's a lot of demo to do. It'll take a little time because we've got kids right on the other side of the wall. Um, so it'll be a slow process to get started until we get those temporary walls in. And then they'll start, start moving on the demo. And they're going to start right back behind as the demo gets done. They'll start building phase two and, and just follow right in behind demolition. But it, it's, it's moving really good over there. I'll have people working starting tomorrow and we'll work all the way through the twenty-fourth to make sure we get it done. And, and we've got a couple of other projects, uh, in the district that we have to do, uh, next week also.
While you're on that, Jeremy. Dr. Lofton and I talked yesterday. He's going to do a little bit of a soft opening with the kids on Monday when they first come back. Maybe have them help the courtyard, nice picture, something like that. So anyway, he's got kind of plans to do that. But it does vet the question of at some point, or you'll need to decide what day or what time you want to do a grand opening. Do you want to do it, you know, the start of this next year for the phase one? Or do you want to wait till it's all complete and then do a grand opening? So just put that on your radar and, uh, have a side of what it is you'd like to do as we open up these new facilities. Same thing with Springdale High and Arena. So we've got some things to talk about maybe at the next work session. Is that okay?
Do you guys have any questions on Central? Okay. Um, Springdale High School, this is inside the track. Um, they've got all that down to grade. They've got the concrete board, all of the turf and the padding is on site. They were going to start today and with the weather, they held off. They'll probably get started tomorrow. But all the turf is here. We, we started receiving that on Tuesday, so, um, they should finish that right as we get ready to start in on the, on the main football field. So that crew will be able to finish here and then move right over to, to that field. So they've made a lot of progress there. The tennis courts, I've done a lot of the work, uh, to, to get rid of the fences and everything. Uh, they went ahead and painted all the light poles. Um, I'm going to start demolition on that asphalt tennis court on Monday, the twenty-fifth. Soon as we get back from spring break, that'll give me a week to get that demoed out and hauled off. And then, um, Flint Co. will, will start the final grade there and then the, the post-tension concrete. Okay, um, it's southwest. Um, they're making a lot of progress over there. This is actually the, uh, band room. Uh, they're starting to put the sheet rock mud on there and, and start those finishes. This is standing at the top of the learning stairs. They're actually starting to build the stage and they put that, the, the brow on the wall. Exterior is pretty much complete. They, they did get a lot of the, uh, finishes on the, the main entrance. And, uh, some of the restrooms, all the finishes are going in on the restrooms, um, to finish those out.
They'll have stalls.
They, they will have stalls.
Maybe it was like a new open concept. I can see, I can see your face.
That's the anti-vaping camp.
Yeah.
No hiding here.
Oh, gosh.
All right.
What's the estimated completion date on southwest? I know I ask that all the time.
So we'll, the day after school gets out, we'll turn power off to the old building. Um, and then start transition all of the utilities over to the new building, the permanent, uh, utilities. And then we'll move all the, all the teachers' personal stuff into the, into the new building and.
Over the summer. So they'll start schooling in August.
Yeah, they'll start schooling there in August. So, so once we get everything moved out, we get the utility switched over, they'll demo that building. And then, um, there's a little bit of work there adding parking lots and, and, uh, and getting all that tied back in.
Parking lots are estimated to be completed in about October, November?
Yeah, they won't, we won't have time to get those totally done before school starts, but we'll be able to start, start school there and work, work around the traffic.
I know we had some tree issues. Trying to save all the trees.
Okay. So we've, we've got that all worked out.
Okay, good. Trees are great, especially those, those are phenomenal trees.
Okay, at George Elementary, um, this is actually, I'm standing north, looking to the south. Um, that's the cafeteria, those big openings will be cafeteria. The building over to the right is computer lab. So they're making a lot of progress, a lot of the bricks up, a lot of the split-faced block is up. This is the inside, there's some, uh, restrooms and then a hall that, that will lead to the cafeteria. Uh, this, this is a, just, this hall will run between the gym and the, and the cafeteria and the, and then the kitchen also. So this, this is the new hallway. So those doors that you see, those were the exterior doors before we had the tornado. So now they'll come out of those doors and, and be inside a, a hallway all the way to the, the gym, cafeteria and the, and the computer lab. That's all I've got. Do you guys have any questions on any of it?
If you're around on spring break, a lot of activities are happening.
Yeah, just swing by Central.
Help you move some furniture in? You may, you may, uh, toss the, her gloves.
All right.
Thank you, Jeremy.
I demolish things.
Sledgehammer and let you start banging stuff?
Can I demolish things?
Good evening, board. Dr. Cleveland, uh, first on my section is I would like to introduce Ms. Sarah Gentry. She's a principal at H C J, CPAs and advisors. And she's here to present our audit report for the school year that ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Good evening, Dr. Cleveland, Warren. Um, I don't think the audit is quite as exciting as all the construction. I don't think the audit is quite as exciting as all the construction that's going on, but I'll try to keep it peppy, right? We -- first off, I want to take a second and say thank you for being here tonight to present the audit and to do the audit report this year as well. And it's important. It's important not all boards ask us to present, and I feel like it's an important responsibility for the board to realize how much judicial responsibility you have to the financial statements. So I always appreciate it when I get asked to present. So thank you for that. I'd be remiss if I didn't take a second to highlight and say thank you to Stacy and her team. An audit's not easy, and you guys are not just subject to a financial statement audit, you're also subject to an audit of compliance and internal controls because of the federal awards that you receive and expend every year. So it's a whole nother level of audit. We make a ton of requests during the time that we're here and in the weeks following as we wrap up. So we really appreciate all the hard work and the timeliness of the requests that we receive. So we appreciate that. So let's just jump into the financial statements. Just a general comment on the audit process itself. Our job and our responsibility over those financial statements, they're your -- they're district's numbers. We just look at those numbers and make sure that they're materially correct, and then we opine on that. So as you'll see on pages one through three, that's the opinion on the financial statements. We issue an unmodified or clean opinion on the regulatory basis of accounting. So you'll see that that's a different basis. Most financial statements in the United States are presumed to be under the U.S. generally accepted accounting principles, but the districts are dictated by Arkansas state law to use the Arkansas regulatory basis of accounting, which is promulgated by MADE. So that's why you have an unmodified, clean opinion under the regulatory basis, but you'll see that if you read into that deeply, there's an adverse opinion on GAAP basis because your financial statements are reported on GAAP. So it has to notify the users of that. The balance sheet is on page four. You'll see that that gets reported under the fund basis of accounting, so each column represents a major fund for the district, and those are also dictated by the regulatory basis as to which ones get reported separately. You'll see the general fund houses your general funds and the restricted state program funds. So it ended the year with a fund balance of $30.9 million. Approximately $7.2 million of that is restricted for future state programs, and then the remaining $23.7 million is unassigned for future use, general use. The special revenue column, that entire $20.8 million in fund balance at year-end is restricted for federal program use, so that's your federal monies and your food service programs get reported in that column. The other governmental column, all of the $92 million fund balance of that is assigned for future capital projects. And as we just heard, that's going to be used over the course of the next probably year or two because there's quite a few projects going on for sure. Then the statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance, that's your basically an income statement, right? But it's -- you don't have income per se for a governmental entity, but that's what it is effectively. On page five, it's also in fund balance presentation. The general fund experienced a net increase in fund balance of $2.8 million. Total revenues were $229 million, which is an increase of about $4.4 million from prior year. Those current year revenues are mostly attributable to your property taxes and your state revenues. So that's the biggest chunk that's going into your general fund revenue. Your property taxes revenues were up about $5.6 million in the current year, and that's due to the community growth. As mentioned, this region of the state is growing by leaps and bounds, so as that community growth happens, your property tax assessments go up. So that's what that increase is. Your state revenues are actually down approximately a million, and that's due to Springdale not qualifying for quite as much declining enrollment funding in the current years it had in the prior year. Total expenditures of the general fund is about $204 million. It's approximately $9.4 million increase from the prior year. There's lots of things that go into that, but some of the main contributing factors are salaries make up quite a bit of that, the majority of that increase, not just your step increases, but also kind of across the board. Most physicians had at least a 2.5% COLA increase of cost of living adjustment increase across the board. So that's a huge chunk of it. You guys have a lot of employees, so that's the biggest chunk of that increase. But then the district also had the need to make several necessary tech purchases with ESA funding, as I think you guys heard in your technology update. Their wireless access points needed upgrading. Those are all big dollars that went into some of the increase in expenses in the current year. And then there was a significant increase in utility costs in the current year that followed suit to a nationwide increase in utility cost. We've seen it across all of our districts, and we do quite a few districts. And so -- and that's just a nationwide increase that caused that increase. The general fund transferred about $22 million to the capital projects and debt service fund in the current year. Then under your special revenues, funds had a net increase in fund balance of $1.7 million. That increase related to the additional ESR monies received in the current year, so that's the biggest reason for that increase. Your other governmental funds had a net decrease in fund balance of $44 million. Revenues were about $16.6 million this year, which was a $10 million increase from the prior year. That was mostly due to the district got approved for and received more facilities partnership monies with the state specific to several renovations that happened in the current year. So that's what contributed to about half of that $10 million increase, and then the rest had to do with interest income, and the current year was up quite a bit because of the rising interest rates. So the expenditures in the special -- or in the other governmental funds were about $89 million in the current year. That's an increase of about $59 million in the current year, and that is those construction projects that we just heard about, specifically this right now. Has a pool at Southwest Junior High, the Central Junior High, the George Elementary, and the Rollins Elementary. So you guys have had a substantial amount of construction projects in the current year. That was totally expected because if you'll remember, the previous year, you issued a bond specifically to cover a lot of that stuff. So that bond was issued in the previous year. You're starting to use some of those funds towards those construction projects in the -- over the course of this year and this future year, the year in right now. You'll also notice that the district sold some property and received some gains related to that, so they sold a size more property in the current year, so you'll see a gain on sale of that related to the proceeds. And then that line item also includes some insurance proceeds received from the tornado that had hit George Elementary in the previous year. And as mentioned previously, the district transferred that $22 million over to the general -- I mean, over to the capital projects and debt service fund. The next page is your budget to actual report, and the regulatory basis requires you to report that for both your general fund and your special revenues. So property tax revenues were higher than expected by about $3 million. That'll fluctuate, as mentioned. They base -- the district bases that budget as well as they can based on the current years of property taxes. So because you guys keep experiencing increases in population growth here, that budget number was slightly lower than what actually came in, which is a good thing. So you were up about $3 million from budgeted on property tax revenue. Your state revenues were also higher than expected by about $1.3 million. The district received several miscellaneous grants in the current year that were unexpected and therefore weren't budgeted for. So there were several, like the Arkansas School of Recognition, the ESA matching, tobacco excess. There were several grants that were not known at the time of budgeting. Expenses had a net favorable variance of $8.9 million. The district conservatively budgets those costs each year, but a few things that played into that, there was some COVID-related expenses that could be moved over because of the COVID fund, so you spent some money and utilized that in the special revenues fund instead of your general fund. And then your capital outlays were higher than anticipated by about $2.6 million, but that's simply because the district decided to go ahead and do some projects that were on the list a little bit ahead of schedule because there was some excess general funds since you were able to move some funds over and spend some dollars from the ESR monies. Those variances basically netted to an unfavorable budget to actual variance of about $8 million in the general fund, but that was mostly due to the fact that you had some positives which allowed you to move some money over to your capital projects and debt service of about $22 million. Your special revenues fund, federal revenues were lower than budgeted by about $12.5 million. That's simply due to the fact how the state requires the districts to budget for the ESR money. So they make you budget everything even though you're not going to be able to logically spend it all. So you'll notice in your special revenues, your budget is off on both your revenues and your expenses because they make you budget for all those ESR monies. So until those things wash out and flush away, you're gonna -- last year, it was even a higher variance because the dollars were bigger too. So the next page, starting on page seven, starts the notes to the financial statements. We're not going to go through each one of those notes. They were made consistent from the prior year's presentation. The one that I do like to point out, because the district reports under the regulatory basis, that basically means that you're reporting on current sources and uses of funds. So a lot of the things like bonds don't show up on your balance sheet. They show up in your footnotes. So that footnote, note four commitments on page 11, that footnote outlines your future commitments to the district, both like your construction commitments that are related to all those construction projects. And then the principal balances and gives you a lot of the details on your bonds. So at year-end, the remaining outstanding principal balance on your bonds was approximately And then moving into the other reports, because you're subject to another level of audit, I mean, the single audit, you have all these other reports in the back that are compliance type reports that are required by various federal and state agencies. You'll see on page 23 and 24, that shows how much in federal expenditures you guys have. You had just under $60 million in federal expenditures this year, $59.5 million in federal expenditures. And because of that, you have quite a bit of other responsibilities over those federal dollars. And so -- and that's when we come in and we do that compliance piece of the audit that tests major programs. So you had two major programs that were required to be tested in the current year. That was your ESR monies and the child nutrition cluster, and we're pleased to report that based on the samples that we selected, there were no reportable findings on those two programs. So kudos to Dr. Cleveland, the team that he's put in place because that is not -- that's not an easy feat. It's easy to have findings just simply because of the amount of transactions that are going through. So that's a huge kudos to your team. We're also required to look at certain state statutes, and that's the last report in the audit, and that we don't have any -- didn't have any findings that were required to be reported on the state statutes that were required to test. So that's the audit in a nutshell. If you guys have any questions on that, I can answer those. And then also, I'd like to say that if we were to have had disagreements with management during the audit process, whether it be application of accounting principles or something of that nature, or difficulty in performing our audit procedure, we would have to notify you as those charge of governance, and we're happy to report. We have none of those reportable findings to tell those guys tonight, so.
Overall, A-plus.
A-plus, that's right. That's a lot of hard work. Yes.
Those numbers make my head hurt, so I appreciate you doing that for us.
They're big numbers, that's for sure.
Well, thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate it. And if you have any questions, they come up after the fact. Stacy knows how to get ahold of me, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Well done.
We really appreciate Sarah. She drove up through this terrible weather.
It's okay. I'll make it home fine.
Okay, my last item is the financial summary for February. Oh, I'm so sorry. Yes.
I need to review the audit report.
I make a motion that we approve the audit report for the year-end of June 30th, 23, as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, Mrs. Creek, and a second, by Mrs. Cook, to approve the audit report as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you, Mrs. Creek. The also included was your February 2024 financials. We continue to stay ahead of where we projected we would be as far as revenue, so even though February and March are our lowest collection months, so even though those are low for, as you see in last month's report, and I kind of anticipate for March as well, we're still ahead of schedule on what we had budgeted for our collection, so I'm still pleased with those. We are where we need to be on our expenditures. We're keeping tabs on those and really looking hard at this, kind of this home stretch, I guess, for the year to make sure that we continue to stay within our parameters of what we want to spend for the year. So I think we're moving in the direction that we want to go at this point.
Are there any specific areas that anybody on the board has any questions about for If not, we do need to approve the statements for this month or for last month?
It's me.
Yeah, you're the money person.
I make a motion that we approve the February 2024 financial statements as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Creek and a second by Mrs. Cook to approve the February 2024 financial statements. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Good. Now, with that, the state. Now, I got a message earlier today that SEA is not going to be here today, so are there any patron -- anybody signed up for patron comments? Well, with that, wait, do we have to do anything without a district transfer or?
No.
No, I think that's just -- Just just there for informational purposes of it? Yes. Okay, with that, we adjourn. Just a hair over two hours.